First in camera session, none. Treaty land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are signatories of Treaty Five and that we reside in the traditional territory of the Mississauga Cree Nation. The school district of Mistree Lake is located in the community of Thompson, the province of Manitoba. Manitoba is located on the traditional and ancestral lands of Nehto, Inunnu Cree, Dennisoulin, Dene, Métis, Inuit, Assininu, Ojibwe, Ishanaw, Ojibwe, and Dakota Oyata, Dakota Nations. The school district of Mistree Lake remains committed to honoring treaties in the spirit of truth and reconciliation. We are all treaty people. We have before us the approval for the minutes for tonight. Can I have someone move that we approve the agenda for tonight? Vice Chair, seconded by Trustee Young. Any discussion or additions to the approval of the agenda before we move on? Oh, we have regrets. You're right. I have regrets tonight from Trustee Lindsay Anderson and I have regrets from Trustee Abby Habney. Can I have, uh, let's do the vote. All those in favor of accepting the agenda for tonight? Adoption of the minutes. We have before us the minutes for September 12th, 2024. Can I have someone move that we accept the minutes from September 12th? Uh, Trustee Nicholsaw, seconded by Vice Chair. Any addition, subtractions from the minutes, any edits? Hearing none. I called the vote. All those in favor of accepting the minutes? Accepted? Okay, thanks, everybody. Item number six, delegations and presentations. Hearing none. Seven, business from previous board meeting. We have before us, uh, 2024 resolutions and nominations for the Manitoba School Boards Association. I'll just read a little bit from the, uh, the, the letter. We have a soft deadline for resolutions for October 16th, 2024, for you to submit for your draft resolutions to, um, to the fall meeting. And there's a hard deadline for final resolutions. Will be the end of the day that each region meets. Okay, so the date that we are meeting is tentatively October 26th. But I think that with the possibility that that date might change. But the date will be in October sometime. So, um, do we want to discuss now? Does, uh, do we have any ideas for resolutions? Motions? We can table this again and, and... So we're regional five, four? Four. So that, that October 26th was a Saturday. Right now, there's an email going out. Uh, the executive director, Josh Watts, that, that Saturday is not good for one of our member boards. So we're canvassing possibility of two other dates. There's an email I forwarded either this morning or yesterday. It's not mandatory, it's voluntary. It'll be the, the four, we, it'll be Flynn Flon, ourselves, the Paw, Kelsey, and Frontier. And yeah, take a look at your emails and see if one of those dates is appropriate. If we can get a consensus of what, what the dates are most appropriate. Like that 26th is okay for me. But, um, I guess we can prioritize where the most of us are available versus the least. And then the region four director can decide what date to choose. Typically, those regional meetings, have you, have you folk, are you folk invited to that as well?
Yeah, I'm going to go, but we haven't seen the email from Josh.
Okay. Well, I'll forward that to you tomorrow morning. Okay.
I'm looking to select one candidate for regional directors. The last time we couldn't win. The problem is because we are sending less trustee members to the convention.
Yes.
Because this is based on the number of present voters, not on the total number of board member on your board. So just think if the majority agrees to send another candidate for the regional directors.
Yeah, I, I wanna think it might not come up.
This year, I think it's on a two or three year rotation. So I'm not sure. You're thinking about Tim. Tim Davis. I don't know when his term is up. But that would be...
Written two, four, and five.
Oh, are they?
Yeah, we'll see the call for nominations.
Okay.
Okay. Sure, we can visit that then?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you thinking about running?
Well, that's for the 2025, 2026 school.
Okay. Okay, well, we can visit that. Okay, any other discussions on that? Okay, moving to item number eight, Superintendent of Human Resources and Policy Report.
Um, I provided you with a written report. There's a couple of things that I'd like to highlight. On September 12th, I attended a session with, um, regarding the, an overview of the provincial teachers, new teachers collective agreement. So we're just kinda trying to muddle our way through that. There's a few things that have changed, so doing lots of flipping back and forth through our manual and, uh, there are some changes. Nothing super significant for, for Thompson, but there are some things that we definitely gotta check back on with regards to, um, maternity leave. There were some changes. There were a couple of other things that we've caught thus far. But yeah, so we're just trying to get our heads around that and making sure that we're, we are administering the collective agreement appropriately. And then within the collective agreement, right on the front page, there's actual timelines, like this takes effect effective, you know, September this date, this will be in effect. There's some that are in effect later on. So just double checking to make sure, um, those things are going smoothly. Just a little bit of a refresher, I guess. The new teacher mentorship program has been developed. This was a, came out of a recommendation from the TTA Health and Wellness Survey that we had back in, I guess it would have been the spring of last year. So the first meeting of the new teacher mentorship program is taking place September 26th. I will be there to do an interest, uh, in, excuse me, interest inventory with the group to develop a PD plan for the group for the next 10 months. Uh, Jolene Brown will be facilitating, facilitating a session with them on reporting to parents. And Zoe Berias will be presenting on guidelines for book study. Thus far, we have seventeen participants that formally signed up. And that was one of the requirements, that they formally sign up to be members of the program. And with that, with their formal sign up comes the expectation of attendance. Obviously, with a group of this size, it's very difficult to have a lot of sessions during the day just because we don't have a lot of substitutes to cover off on people being sick and then seventeen people out being in the new mentorship program. So, uh, some of the, the commitment will be that a lot of the professional development sessions will be in the evenings. So, um, yeah, so it'd be interesting to see what they, what kind of things I'd like to know more about in their first... So this was open to all teachers in the division in the first five years of teaching.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll see how that goes. I'll update you on...
Yeah, I would be curious to sit in on some of those sessions.
You are more than welcome to, if you'd like to.
Yeah, I'm the teacher, Watson. Super. Any questions for the superintendent? Uh, item number eight, Superintendent of Educational Services and Programming Report.
So I've submitted my report. Um, just a few highlights. The, um, we met, the Community School Connectors Administration family outreach to, um, just wanted to go over our summer programming and then look at a year at a glance just to make sure that, um, we're well planned for the year. Our summer programming was a success. We had, um, activities on Thursdays for families. And we had some family bowling, we had some family bongo, we had, uh, Games Day and a family giveaway. All were well attended, um, and some of the events had over seventy people. So that's a success for, for our three schools. So we looked at this year and what we want to continue. We're gonna continue on with the Christmas movie. We have, um, the facilities booked for that. We're gonna host three full moon ceremonies, so each community school will host one. And family camps, um, our first family camp will be happening soon. And then the spring fling. And something new this year is we're hoping to host a parent conference in the spring. So we're making plans for that. Um, and then the schools have their own events over the year. And we did welcome Alyssa Anderson as the new connector for Juniper School. So Alyssa actually worked for us in 2015. She was our career development officer, so it's really, really good to have her back. Yeah. Um, and then tomorrow, we have a meeting with the Indigenous Excellence, IE, department in regards to community schools and that, the lead there is Melissa Brown. So that's happening tomorrow. Attached is the information for the Dawn Burnstick workshops that's happening on September 27th, which is Friday. Um, we're in a partnership with the Thompson Humane Society. We are really fortunate that, um, the Humane Society approached us last year to help with the cost of bringing Dawn Burnstick in. And he was gonna provide two sessions for our kids. So we have the Empowering Our Youth, which will be for all our grade seven and eights. And then in the afternoon, we'll have Evolution of a Teenager. And that will be classes to sign up, just because there's too many kids to, to say everybody can come, so they'll have to sign up. So yeah, we're really excited to have him and it works out really nicely because it is Truth and Reconciliation Week. So, um, our land-based camps for grade fives are gonna happen the week of October 1st to the 3rd. Um, so the planning is started for that. And we're also gonna have our family camp for the three community schools on that Friday. And we're gonna be using the location on Seal Road. So you're more than welcome to come out if you wanna see what's going on. We have a few other things that have popped up. I had, I submitted the information for last year's nutrition, um, program for the district. Um, it was a combination between breakfast, snack, and milk program. One school runs a milk program, but, um, there were 1,405 students who were served some type of nutrition over the course of the year. And that was, um, five schools reporting. Two other schools weren't part of that. So it's almost half of our kids. And I received a letter from SAM, which is Student Services Administrators Association of Manitoba, and just, um, thanking us for Jolene Brown accepting the role of second vice president at the SAM Provincial Executive for the 2024, 2025 term. So, yeah, it's, uh, it's good to have somebody on the provincial leadership, so. And October 15th, um, this is a little early. I don't quite have the agenda ready. I've sent a tentative agenda to the Truth and Reconciliation, um, for the treaty training. So I will have that agenda for the next meeting. She was gonna have it sent out. I gave her kind of our timelines. She sent who the presenters were gonna be. So we're gonna have an elder, we're going to have, um, somebody who's gonna speak to the importance of the, the history. And then, uh, there's four people presenting.
What day is that?
That is October 15th.
October 15th.
Yeah, and you're more than welcome for attention. Actually, if you're going in ten, let me know because we're going to be providing lunch for the...
Is that a full day? That's a nine to five kind of thing?
Uh, no, it'll be a nine to three thirty.
Nine to three.
Yeah. But we're gonna provide lunch, so if you're gonna come, let me know so that we have enough, um, lunch for everybody. This would be nice for you to have a chat. I'm not sure who the elder is. They try and get an elder from the region. Um, the last elder they had was the late Darcy Linklater, so I'm not sure who, who their new elder is. So, um, yeah, and then of course, this is my busy season. This is the time where, uh, I'm writing reports on continuous improvement and planning for our year plan. So, um, education program, we'll hear more about that at our meeting on Tuesday, the next, October 8th.
Yeah. Any questions for the superintendent?
Other question. Who's coordinating the bus? You are the school boss.
Who's looking after the bus?
Who's coordinating the, the school boss?
Yes. It's all very new.
The head school boss regulations, so maybe there's a requirement that we have to do that through emergency response drill two times.
Oh, the emergency, um, response?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I have any plan for that?
Um, I can reach out to, we do that contract service through, for a student and they're responsible for, for all of that. So I'll see what, what their plans are for that.
Another thing, I had a chance to speak to one of the drivers, so there is no helper in the past. So also in the regulation, there is no requirement that you have to be helper. But my question is, can we make a recommendation to, for a helper? Because I know this is covered by the indigenous providers.
So I haven't heard of any issues. I'm, I'm assuming that you're Navid or Fred? Okay. So there's been no issues. I know that, um, because we rode the bus for the first few days, just to make sure that the kids knew. Um, and there were no issues. I haven't heard of any issues. Parents were notified that if there were issues, that the bus driver is the boss and they will go to the principal and kids may get suspended or they might not be able to ride the bus for, you know, a day, two days. But eventually, they could be asked to not be on the bus at all. Like, it's not their right to be on that bus. So I guess if they're wanting, I would hear that back from Bill, who is their, their person, right?
And they produce a recording of the bus activities. There is a camera for recording for all activities. Do you have a chance to look at the activities? What they're doing, the kids or anything, the bus?
Okay, I can check back with Bill to see if there's issues. My only reluctance is, is that I'm trying to not spend a whole lot of our insurance money because that's coming from insurance money, right? And we're trying to build a school. So, um, we'll, let me, let me look into it.
Point the border.
Oh, sorry, yes.
None of this information is contained in the report. Is it the will of the board to look at student transportation?
I don't mind if the trustee wants to answer the question. I mean, if it's done. Yeah. Is everybody...
The direction was for senior men to prepare more stuff to report back.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. So are you, are you proposing then, and the, uh, no, no, that's fine. Can I have a, a small anecdote? Can, can we indulge the chair for a second? The chair was a bus patroler for about five years when he was a boy. And, uh, when I was young, we had the bus patroler had a belt and a, and a... You did too, a bus patrol program?
Yeah, it's called a, a bus monitor.
Bus, yes, that's right, a bus monitor. And it was student driven, like it was a, well, there was a staff allocated to it to help train them. But there were students and, 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 and you, the, the, they were always mature students, of course, you know? And there was, and so, yeah, I, I was the AV monitor too, so just to give you a, a picture, you know? And, and so that was a responsibility oftentimes these senior students would be the ones, you know? Hey, Tommy, make sure you keep your legs out of the aisle. And Suzie, you're not supposed to be drinking on the bus. It was, you know, it was volunteer, it was just, just students. And I think maybe, maybe, I know we're not, maybe in five years, we don't have buses anymore. But maybe right now, is that something we could do for fun? And let, see if there's some mature students who might wanna take that on? Buy them a little... I don't know if Manitoba has a bus monitor program. I don't know.
So our kids that are riding the bus are in two different age groups.
Yeah.
We have the, the K to five, and then we have the six to eight.
Yeah, the K to five would be the tricky ones.
Right, and that bus is very full.
Yeah.
Very full.
But even if you could assign maybe a thirteen-year-old to that bus.
But which thirteen-year-old are we getting?
Because there's no thirteen-year-olds on that bus. They're ten. Yeah.
And he doesn't end up at a school or she, he or she just...
Amy, the, the bus monitoring, you, you know? I'm just putting it out there.
Going to two different locations, but I will...
But it would, it would come to minimal cost to us.
Have, I mean, have there been reported issues on the bus?
I've had no issues, so I'm the contact, so.
But even go, go, going back to like, uh, an emergency drill or whatever, the, 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 the bus patrol would be responsible. They would get trainee, what happens if you... The bus catches fire? Yeah. Yeah, the bus patrolers can help with that. That's what I would, you know? But it's up. I digress. Okay. Uh, any questions, any more questions before we move on? A Secretary of Treasury's report.
Expenditures as of September 17th, 2024. Uh, we're, we were 5.18% through the school year. Um, our approved budget is $50,186,874. The expenses year-to-date, $4,098,595,000. This is, um, an operating expense report. It excludes any insurance expenditures so that it allows us to continue to monitor how we're tracking on our established plan. Uh, you'll notice that our year-to-date spend is exceeding the school year. Um, that's because we had a few, uh, early expenditures that are, um, a large amount within maintenance that, uh, are front-loaded, were paid forward at the beginning of the year, but, uh, the percentage will decline as we proceed through the year. No surprises in our operating budget at this time. Our other expenditures are, uh, tracking through the insurance, uh, process and, uh, reporting to the finance committee.
Any, any questions on expenditures? Okay, here we go.
Um, the next item distributed tonight is the trustee travel. Individual travel expenses were distributed. Our trustee travel expenses as of June 30th, 2024 was $8,614.97, um, well below the planned travel or the planned value of travel.
For any questions for the Secretary of Treasury? Okay, super, thank you so much. Item number 11, new business. Seeing none? Item number 12, correspondence. 12.1, Manitoba School Boards Association? I think that's just a newsletter, is it? I printed it up somewhere. Oh, this is the resolutions. Okay, this is the call for resolutions. The memo. Right, okay. So that's there for your, for Russo. Okay, item number 13, committee reports. Policy Committee. Did they meet yet? No. Tomorrow? Yeah. Okay, super. Education and Programming Committee?
It'll be Abby.
Abby?
Yeah, we meet on the eighth, at five o'clock.
Okay, super. Uh, Public Relations Committee? That's tomorrow as well, correct?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
And policy's right after.
And policy's right after, okay, good. Uh, 13.4, Finance Property Committee. I know they just met.
Yeah, we met prior to, um... Uh, the finance report was reported by the Secretary of Treasury, which was reviewed. We looked at our dashboard for our, um, student breakfast program and we decided to keep that in the same reporting stature. We reviewed expenses due to the Westwood School insurance claim. We reviewed the trustee indemnity bylaw, which has a yearly review on it. We discussed the Birdwood School project was, which was asked by the provincial government to be brought to a point and then paused due to, uh, provincial funding. Uh, we reviewed insurance comparison between our 23, 24, and 24, 25 insurance coverages. Uh, we're seeing an eight percent increase in our insurance coverage. We reviewed the trustee travel expenses. Everything fell into place. Uh, we reviewed grant and funding and spending, um, which we learned actually that there's a lot more grant out there than what we all realized. And there's a lot of, of grant money out there, which is a very good thing and a very, kudos to everybody that goes after that money and brings it in so that we have it. Uh, we also had to review the, because of the teachers' contracts that were ratified, um, there's some work going into having to figure out their retro payments. So the, uh, finance, our finance people are working on that, put that together. And our next meeting is going to be on October 22nd, I believe it was, right? October 22nd?
Sure. Are any questions for the Chair of Finance? Hearing none? Uh, other committees? Do we have any, uh, Ms. Abby, she's with AHEC, but she's not here. Did anybody else meet? Maybe not, eh? Okay.
We did do a walk-through.
We did do a walk-through. When we do trustee comments, you could, you could say that. You gotta, you don't wanna extend all the arrows in your quiver. We're going, write your trustee comments, and that was gonna be my comments. I'll leave it for you to comment. How about that? Uh, okay, item number 14, trustee comments.
Okay, well, uh, thanks, Lori, uh, for inviting us to, to go and walk around, uh, both schools. Um, yeah, it was nice to see. I, I was impressed with all the work and, uh, I know it's congested, but people are still in good spirit and they're working, plugging along and, uh, yeah. I say thank you to everybody that's doing all the work that they're doing. It was actually nice to go in and see that, you know, everybody is still doing their job. Right? And there was no one complaining, which was even more interesting, for me, anyway.
They don't, they don't complain when we're there. Sometimes they do. No, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna, uh, what, what trustee Nicholsaw says about Juniper and, uh, and Birdwood. Yeah, do a fantastic job. I was really, I really enjoyed that Friday, that walk-through, uh, seeing the students, um, seeing the, the Westwood, the sign, signage, and seeing the teachers in their, in their space and seeing the students and seeing, you know, it, yeah, it's tight, but I think morale is high. You know? And, uh, at the end of the day, we'll get them to the finish line. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Super.
I'd like to congratulate and welcome our new trustee, elected Michelle Nicholsaw. I hope she'll, uh, able to show her experience because she has lots of experience involved with lots of organizations in her life. And we are hoping that we can learn something new from her. Thank you.
Good. Just one comment that I had, and it goes back to the busing. I know there's a lot of issue with all the construction going on. So just remind people, they gotta be more, a little more patient right now. Like, I seen it firsthand this morning with some stuff going. And everybody's just gotta remember just to stop, let the bus do its thing, let the kids get on. Remember the lights are on, you're not supposed to pass the bus. And in a month from now, we'll be out of the construction and everything will be back to something reasonable, so.
And then the snow comes.
Well, the snow comes, but at least there's not, you don't have a tractor here and a dump truck there and a loader there and people trying to get around and getting excited, so have, have patience. For the five-minute commute work. Everybody just needs to have a little patience and remember there's little ones getting on that bus. And everybody needs to get to and from school safe, so.
Y'all are fine, um, for, yeah, with the stop signs open. Or, and, um, the RCP said they've, they've been warning people, but that, that does stop. They start handing out tickets.
Well, what I seen today was on Westwood Drive, the bus, I think, was supposed to turn into Grayling to make a turn there, but that wasn't possible. So everybody just shut down, they let the bus do what they had to do. Everybody went to the side, the bus did his thing, and everybody got out of the way. But it's all a matter of patience. If you don't have the patience, it's not gonna be good, so.
Well, there's an example in the CPC the other day. It was, there was, you guys read in the CPC, the little boy who came out of the bus. Went, it was, it was, it was a small highway, country highway. The little boy was crossing to the other side of the road. Of course, someone ignored the lights, went around the bus and hit the bu, the boy, and the boy died. We do not wanna see that happen up here. And that was, I think that was probably in Manitoba, I think it was in this province, so. Yeah, respect the lights, for sure. And that's the bus patroler, you know? Speaking, I was gonna say, that's where the bus patroler, you know, can, can help make sure that happens too. But yeah, definitely. The bus driver can't do everything, right? I was gonna say, that's where the bus patroler, you know, can can help make sure that happens too, but yeah, definitely, the bus driver can't do everything, right? It has to, the drivers have to respect the lights, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I just have a couple of acknowledgements to our Artie Parker Athletics Team, they've done really well this month. Uh congratulations to the Artie Parker Junior Volleyball on their second place finish at their first annual Northern Lights Invitation. Um congratulations to both Artie Parker Soccer Teams who battled the two to one record in Swan River earlier this month. And congratulations to our Artie Parker Golf Teams, both teams came home with championships. And congratulations to Reed uh Scadden and Charlie Voituk on winning top player in their categories.
Super, and I I guess, and 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 just uh on behalf of the trustees, I I want to say thank you to my colleagues for wearing the orange shirt, this is um. This is an important weekend and Monday, of course, is is the provincial holiday for uh remembrance of the of the missing children and uh. You know, lest we forget, right, it cannot happen again, so uh everybody take time this week to uh. To pay your respects and memories to those children who have suffered and children who have been left behind, right? Uh thank you, thank you, everybody. Moving to fifteen questions from the public.
I have one.
All right.
Um September twenty seventh, the dormers students here, where is workshop?
The workshops are gonna be at the Lexington Theater for the students.
Super. Any other question from the public? Okay, thank you, can I have someone move that we move in camera for the second session? Um trustee Sharker, seconded by uh trustee Young, all those in favor? Okay.